All right, we're live.
Okay, let's give people a few minutes to file in. Elsie. Just one second, everyone. Oh. Um, Terry. Could you text Elsie the phone number for her to call in because she has no internet?
Just give me a second, I got a towel here.
Okay, while you're doing that, Terry, I'm going to get us started and Joan, when you're doing the roll call, please note that Elsie will be joining us via phone because she has no internet. All right. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune, an email to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on August 12th, 2021, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on August 12th, 2021, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. As Mayor, I preside over this council meeting and may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant statement or participation in the virtual meeting if the participant statement does not adhere to the three minutes provided to each participant for public comment or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Councilman Hirsch, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation, our God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Burt Mittler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera. Councilwoman Foster. Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hover.
Here.
And Borough Clerk, just for the record, Councilwoman Foster will be joining us by phone, she has no internet. Okay, council members. Do you have any questions on today's agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Um. Before I call for a motion to consider the cannabis ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading, I just want to say a few things. The governing body of the borough has approached this matter with the following principles in mind. One, the law of the land in New Jersey now allows for the consumption of cannabis as its delivery of cannabis to residents in our town is already anticipated under the law. In all scenarios, in other words, we cannot outlaw this option. We anticipate that cannabis use will become a feature in Highland Park's life, whether or not the Borough Council takes any steps. Secondly, cannabis sales are being approved in two municipalities surrounding Highland Park. All six classes are approved by this, that were approved by the state, will be allowed in New Brunswick. And this was reported in an article on June 23rd, excuse me, June 23rd in MyCentralJersey. Additionally, Edison has approved cannabis business on first reading. They will be addressing this on second reading two days from now. And that too was reported in MyCentralJersey.com. As delivery is allowed in New Brunswick and Edison will host businesses selling cannabis, it is a moot point as to whether or not there will be cannabis in Highland Park. The relevant questions are, can we position the town so as to encourage the safest uses of this new consumer option by residents? And can we benefit from tax revenues that such sales allow? One of the ways we can encourage the safest uses of cannabis is through strict enforcement of the law, which forbids sales to minors under the age of 21. The Highland Park Police Department will make this a priority. The mayor and Borough Council, that's me and the council, have also consulted with public schools to enlist them in creating a program to discourage school-aged children from consuming cannabis. This program will be similar to the one the schools have used very successfully to discourage consumption of alcohol and drinking and driving. The schools are working on a cannabis education program, which we hope to see by the beginning of the 2021-2022 school year. I and the council, in addition, charge the borough's social worker with developing a program to educate parents on how to talk to children about cannabis use, including the risks to children. We hope to see a full draft of this plan by early September. Lastly, one of our goals is to work with people most hurt by the cannabis prohibition to make sure they benefit from its legalization. And now. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the cannabis ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Ordinance by the Borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, allowing Class 5 retail cannabis businesses, Class 6 cannabis delivery services and medical cannabis dispensaries in the CBD and C zoning districts, establishing licensing, taxation, and zoning requirements in connection therewith, and prohibiting all other classes of cannabis businesses within the geographical boundaries of the borough, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are in file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
All right, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
No move.
Second.
Okay, we're going to turn now to any public hearing. So if you would like to participate in the public hearing, please raise your hand on this. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact wording in front of me, I'm going to ask the clerk or the Borough Administrator to help me with the raising your hand or participating by phone language.
I believe it's star nine there.
Okay, all right then.
And the raise hand button on your platform, whichever version.
Okay, thank you so much for that.
I can't believe I was hesitant about that one after all these meetings.
So then, if you would like to comment on this, you will have each speaker will be given three minutes. And you can press the star nine on your phone or the raise hand button on the Zoom application. The Borough Administrator will call out either your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please state your name and address before speaking. All right, Borough Administrator, do we have any raised hands?
Yes, we do, Mayor, just for the record, at this time, we have thirty attendees and seven hands raised. First up is Daniel Stern Cardinal. Please state your name and address for the record.
Daddy, quiet.
Hi. Hi. Sorry, everybody, hi. Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street. I'm going to be very brief because, as you may imagine, it's, we're approaching bedtime here. So, um, plus, you've, you've all heard from me plenty, so I'll, I'll keep this very short. Um, I've provided studies with the actual data that I'm going to reference to several members of the council and also the mayor. So if anybody else wants that, email me, track me down on Facebook, I'd be happy to provide the primary sources. But I just want to just make sure that we're all operating from the same kind of basis in terms of the data that's available to us, right? So what we know is that cannabis use tends to replace alcohol use rather than be used with it. And there is less strong evidence for other drugs, but it's probably also a substitution effect there as well. At the neighborhood level, recreational cannabis is associated with a decrease in crime. At the state level, there's no clear trend, national trend, swamp out any effects at the state level. In terms of use among minors, the weight of evidence is that recreational cannabis and having actual businesses in a town does not lead to a net increase in use. According to a minority of studies, there's a small temporary bump, but then it goes back to the status quo. There's no causal relationship between legal cannabis and an increase in traffic accidents. And in terms of property values, the effects are small, but most studies show an actual increase in property values associated with cannabis businesses in a neighborhood. So for anyone worried about how this will affect Highland Park, I want to be very clear. The sky will not fall. This is a positive thing and it's absolutely the right thing for Highland Park. So I want to thank everybody who's been involved in getting this passed. I'm really excited that we've got to this stage, so let's get it over the goal line, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, Terry, is there, there are other hands.
There are other hands raised. I see next up is Hugh Giordano. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Hugh Giordano, 57 Argyle, Blackwood, New Jersey. Mayor and council, I was here before, as you know. I am a representative of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, UFCW. The UFCW is a national labor union of 1.3 million hard-working families, and we are the official labor union that represents cannabis workers from seed to sale, both medical and adult use. I want to commend council and mayor for taking a leadership role in this and creating good jobs. Your ordinance is well thought out, well-written. And I love the fact as, and we love the fact as a labor union that you have a merit-based application system that looks at things that affect working-class people, specifically labor standards to protect working people. And we really appreciate that and we support this ordinance as written. I hope other cities, towns, and boroughs, your neighbors, and even those that are down south Jersey as well, will follow your leadership and pass the same type of ordinance. You should be commended. This ordinance is a, is a working-class ordinance and it supports good jobs. I wanted to just say that we're happy to see that you're promoting both medical and adult use. And we think this will be good for working people specifically so they don't have to travel long distances to get their medicine or have to pay surcharge on delivery if one is in the local area for citizens, and, and we think that's great. So on behalf of the AFL-CIO, on behalf of the UFCW, we want to thank you again and we support this ordinance and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Okay, Borough Administrator.
Next is Ruthie Solomon. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, my name is Ruth Solomon, I live at 704 South First Avenue in Highland Park. I heard the mayor say it, I think, two meetings ago, that 2% of something is better than 2% of nothing. To allow this in our town, exactly what kind of money would it bring to us with regard to taxes? Or, or, you know, revenue, what, what are we getting out of it?
Well. I think there are many things that we'll be able to get out of this. The 2% of the, of the sales is, of course, based on the number of stores that would be here and the amount of sales in each of those stores. So it's a little hard for us to predict that at this point. However, we, we are also hoping that this will help provide jobs for people in our community and make access to medical marijuana easier for those in need. Do any of the council people want to add to that? Okay. Thank you.
Uh, looks like John Kovak is next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
John Kovak, 206 North Third Avenue in Highland Park. I'll try to keep this brief. I, I think, for one thing, the people of New Jersey have spoken on this issue. And I think it would be a good thing for the town of Highland Park. It would bring in revenue. It would bring in jobs. And I think it pretty much fits the character of the town. And I don't think it would present a, a, an undue hazard. So I commend you all for the hard work you've done. And I thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Joan.
Next, I see someone coming up as Skip. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Walter Rogers, 111 Riverview Avenue. You can call me Skip, please. My, my question is not whether we do it or we not do it. My question relates to the business owners. Now, under the current banking laws, they have a problem depositing their money in a bank account. So have you looked into that? And what changes have to be made? Not just in state law, but also federal banking law to allow money coming in from these organizations, from these businesses to, to be deposited in, in, in a bank account. And, and otherwise, this is a cash business. So I think that's something that has to be addressed. Whether you agree to it, I mean, whether, whether you vote for it or not. Hey, look. Whatever you do, you do. But I think that's a question that you have to, you have to address. And how can you help these entrepreneurs, these new business owners to do their business? Thank you.
Thank you, Skip. Okay.
I guess, Mayor, we've got Brian Byer up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Byer, 228 South Third Avenue. And I wanted to express my opposition to this ordinance in the strongest term possible. And also to make clear, the opposition to this ordinance has nothing whatsoever to do with the quote-unquote "law of the land", prohibition, quote-unquote "of cannabis", quote-unquote "whether or not cannabis will be in town". With all due respect, those, that's a straw man argument. Where, where the question is whether this ordinance should be allowed and whether or not a 1.8 square mile town should have multiple, up, up six or so businesses, commercial businesses with consumption lounges. And not one resident I spoke to is in favor of having consumption lounges within, in, in proximity to churches, synagogues, schools. For instance, my synagogue, Ohav MF, is, has commercial businesses right next door to our synagogue. And any given Shabbos, there are dozens of children spilling out onto the sidewalks. And the, the residents I speak to are horrified by the idea of having consumption lounges literally next door to the synagogue. That's what the zoning is going to allow. And that's the, the question and the only question, the question is not about legalization. That's, that is not the question. The question is this ordinance, and I want to state my strongest possible opposition to it and say every resident I spoke to has been opposed to this ordinance, not legalization of marijuana, but this ordinance, dozens, dozens of people I've spoken to are opposed to it. I haven't heard one person say, yeah, that's a good idea. So, okay, that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone, Councilman Hale, or Borough Attorney Schmier want to address the issue that was just raised?
Well, the, the, the standards that are in the ordinance, which will allow the council to select locations and also the operators, it does call for compliance with the land use regulations. So. There is no specific prohibition in terms of proximity to a school or to a church, but it still has to be a legal use in either the central business district or the commercial district. And that's the first item that you look at when you start considering whether or not an operator can use a given facility for that use.
Thank you. All right, Terry, is there anybody else?
Yes, and just so everybody's aware, we're, we're at 35 attendees with four hands raised. It looks like Matt Fisco is up next. Matt Fisco, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Great, Matt Fisco, 6 Holly Court, Highland Park, New Jersey. I just wanted to know if for establishments and entities that have no smoking policies, will it be understood that people who want to participate in having cannabis will do so as in edible? And the fact that cannabis becoming legal to be consumed should, cannot be consumed in a, in a smoking format where a no-smoking policy exists? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman George, I saw you nodding your head, did you want to address that?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may, just briefly. The no-smoking provision in the cannabis law is contained in one section, which is 2C 35-10A. As Mr. Schmier has pointed out, and it rolls cannabis smoking or vaping, smoking or vaping into the same prohibitions as public smoking, which has been around for years and years and years. It does exempt consumables.
Okay.
However, the establishment can say that they don't want consumables, but the smoking is prohibited, same as smoking in public places.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Terry, do we have another hand?
We do, looks like John Buco is next. Please state your name and address. You might need to unmute yourself. John Buco. Alrighty, why don't we go to the next person?
Okay.
We will. And John, just, when you sort it out, if you want to try to speak, just raise your hand again, I'm, I'm handed you there. Just, it looks like Botan's next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Mary Botan, 709 Madison. I wanted to read you the list of names that you received in opposition to this ordinance. As Brian said, we're not looking to relitigate legislation, this is regarding this ordinance. You have full names and addresses on file, I will do first name, last initial. These are residents all over town who do not support this proposal. Please vote no tonight. Tao L, Shari S, Sean W, Alicia R, Ellie K, Joshua G, Tatiana G, Sahar J, Nicholas C, Ida S, Patricia G, Emily M, Tammy R, Shelley S, Rabbi Kaufman, Eli K, Albert G, Shing W, Sayed R, Jong Fang L, Shimming W, Richard B, Long Bo Y, Hong D, Andrew Y, Rebecca Y, Shui L, Yong Z, Wan L, Lindsay W, N L, Anik A, Anatoly S, Marna W, Avi W, Rong Jing G, Ken S, Evan A, Rachel C, Ashish C, Alona H, Guarav S, Jill L, Josh E, Say K, Edna F, Felipe R, Rosa R, Dan Thoy T, Peter A, Karen A, Joshua F, Jenny F, Dove F, Sophie F, Angelo B, Ernesto B, Marilyn B, Mary B, Andrew G, Barbara S, Barbara L, Mark A, Marcia L, Mark S, Hyam B, Atara H, Rosie B, Edward E, Bet E, Brian B, Ruth B, Raissa B, Rachel H, Dan J, Iris J, Gary K, Deena K, Dr. Arthur Miller, Philippa B, Maggie B, Joyce G, Carolina C, Patrick C, Michael C, Maureen C, Joseph C, Jonathan C, Catherine G, Sierra G, Jordan G, Sheen T, Hayden H, Grace Z, Steven Z, Meyer F, Daniel L, David F, Robert K, Michael G, Shari G, Leo B, Leslie O, Josh O, Alexander O, Uriel O, Alet O, Seagal O, Max W, Eric S, K S, Lisbeth R, Olga R, Jonathan R, Yadira C, Carmen B, Rosa P, Anne Marie F, Martha B, Estella C, Esther W, Josie R, Blanca E, Tiffany K, Thomas K, Abdul H, Ly L, Malika E, Nicholas C, Father Abraham Lotha, D D, Marcia P, Jenny S.
Thirty seconds.
Epidia L, Juan E, Therman B, Diane L, Beatrice A, Melva M, Andrew Q, Marta D, Lilian Q, Magdalio O, George P, Elsa C, Luis M, Petra B, Antonio G, Narcissa S. And last, last but not least, a group of students who signed under the heading, Students Against Dispensaries in Highland Park. Please listen to the community. Please vote no tonight. Please put in the opt-out and let's discuss further.
Time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, is there another hand?
Yes, it looks like Gopali Vacarelli is next. Please state your name and address for the record.
One moment. Um, Gopali Vacarelli, otherwise known as Barbara, 603 South Third. But I actually have someone listening in with me who would like to speak.
We'll need the name and address of the person.
Yes, my name is Victoria Kayes. I currently reside at 1625 Parker Road. I've lived in the area all my life, I'm from East Brunswick originally. Started working in Highland Park in 2010. I now have been working for Garden State Dispensary since 2014. I was just, I wanted to listen in and maybe ask a couple quick questions. I jumped in a little late, so pardon me if I, if anything is repetitive, but I jumped in when somebody was talking about the vicinities to schools and parks and things of that manner. I know that NJMMP, the New Jersey Medical Marijuana Program, prohibits dispensaries from operating typically 500 feet from parks and schools. I don't know if this is going to be part of the new law or not for recreational and what it has to do with Highland Park, but I wanted to ask if there were any stipulations there. And also I wanted to ask if Highland Park has the ability to differentiate between what kind of licenses are allowed in the borough? So, for example, like a micro license, I think, would be something more soothing, you know, if it passes. I think that that is something like a small business that would fit in Highland Park. You know, in contrast, a bigger license, I don't think there's anywhere where we could fit that here. So, yeah, thank you for giving me a moment to speak.
Sure, and Borough Attorney, would you just outline quickly the categories that we are voting on, including in this ordinance?
Well, there, there are only, there's actually one category out of the list of different classes of cannabis activity that the borough is going to authorize directly. Class number six is delivery. And the state law permits delivery of cannabis products anywhere in the state. So you don't have to have a, an ordinance to do that. Your ordinance does include that, of course, because that's the law. But the only class of license that you are authorizing tonight is class. five, which is retail cannabis, which would include recreational cannabis and also medical dispensaries. Those are the only uses out of the list of six uses that you are permitting in, in Highland Park. And to answer the last question first about the, the micro operation, as long as it's considered and defined as a retail cannabis operation, you don't have to have a mega operation. It could be a small one. But as long as it qualifies under the definition of a retail cannabis operation, then that could be permitted and licensed here in, in the borough if the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Borough Administrator?
Just a point of clarification for the Borough Attorney. I, aren't we opting into class five and class six retail and delivery businesses within the borough? I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that point. I'm sorry if that's what you said and I missed it.
I, I said it in the opposite order, in other words.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just, I got, I got, I had, I just, I thought if I was confused, somebody else.
You're right. It's five and six, nothing else.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to put it out there, I guess in my own words.
Okay, Borough Administrator, is there another hand?
Mayor, I do see, oh, I see a Gopali, which is actually Victoria, maybe hand. Maybe I, I put her hand down before she is done, but I also have another speaker, so.
So, so if Victoria is just asking about a follow-up question to her original, then let's do that.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll go back to that one. I apologize. I, I, I preempted them there. All right, Gopali slash Victoria, you are unmuted. Apologies.
Victoria, hi. It's okay. Victoria speaking. I just wanted to clarify because I know, I know that community members would be, you know, worried about the proximity to parks and schools. And like I said, the way I'm familiar with the law is that we can't have dispensaries, you know, within five hundred feet from parks and schools. My question is, would this go for synagogues as well? I would imagine so. And if so, would that, you know, I, I asked the question is, is that going to be something that would make the community more comfortable? Because as far as I know, in, in my experience, I haven't seen any dispensaries opened up within that proximity.
So Borough Attorney, would, would a synagogue be considered a school, I believe is the question, if I could rephrase it?
Yes.
Well, I, certainly if, if they offer an educational component, which I believe all of them do, then I guess you could classify that as a school operation. And if the standalone, it's been around for a while, dispensary state law has a five-hundred-foot requirement, then as Victoria points out, that would have to be followed if you want to be a dispensary for medical purposes in, in the, in the borough. Our ordinance does not have a specific disqualification distance for a, a retail operation, whether it's a recreational one or it's a dispensary. But if the, if there is a state law, as she indicates there is, for a medical dispensary to be at least five hundred feet away, then we would have to follow that requirement as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hale, did I see your hand up?
I just wanted to, to make sure to clarify that, that that there is not a five-hundred-foot restriction in state law, according to our understanding. We will follow whatever the state law becomes or whatever the state law is. But as of right now, our understanding is that there is not a five-hundred-foot restriction for cannabis businesses, similar to, you know, there's, there's not a restriction for, for liquor stores. So I just want to make sure that we are currently following our, our understanding of the law and that there is not that restriction, so, for cannabis businesses.
Okay. Oh, Councilman Harris, you guys have follow-up?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add that, yeah, the only school restriction is advertising within two hundred feet of a school in the, in the state law.
Okay. Okay, Borough Administrator?
It looks like Marna is up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Harrison Avenue, oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Marna Wolf, four or three Harrison Avenue.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, I just wanted to call and say that I'm voting no. I'm not in support of this ordinance, the dispensary, the dispenser.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Joyce Gregus. Just a heads up, I'm, given the year of your Zoom or your version of Zoom you're using, I'm gonna have to promote you to panelist, which means your camera may flicker on briefly before I have a chance to disable it or you have a chance. So I'm slowing my speech down to give you a chance to ready yourself for that eventuality. So again, Joyce Gregus, I'm now allowing you to speak. And I will try to stop your video, which I have now done. There you go. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll need to unmute yourself. Joyce, you need to unmute yourself?
Okay, good evening. Thank you. I just want to tell you, I think that we have a great little town. Everything is going well and whatever, and I think we should fully opt out of this by eight twenty-one at the very least to provide more information and understanding on these critical issues. This is very, very important. I want everybody to listen. Do you ever see what you look like after you smoke a joint? You got wrinkles on your face, you're ugly looking, and whatever, it doesn't do anything for you. So just remember all that good stuff. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Looks like, and oh, excuse me, Mayor, I meant to mention this probably ten minutes ago, at least. I noticed that Councilwoman Foster is joining us via phone there, so I apologize for not saying that as soon as I noticed.
Okay.
Looks like the person coming up as Tot G is up next. If you want to state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm Tatiana Gale from one one eight North Fifth Avenue. I sent you a letter, a kind of detailed letter with my position and also kind of the effects of, on health, on health. The effects of marijuana on health, so I hope you, you look through my letter. So I wanted to repeat that. One concern that I have was answered about the zones, because if some people have issues breathing, they don't want to inhale smoke. They don't want to inhale wipes either, so it has to be really restricted. But I also want to say that I strongly oppose, I am opposing letting the, the pot shops in town. And I'm wondering, why is it in this environment that there are no even state guidelines and so many towns opting it out? Why does Highland Park have to rush and without really doing much research and without getting a detailed knowledge of the effects of pot on health and education and brain development of kids and so on? Why do we need to promote it in our town? Because actually inviting this business that is not really kind of popular, I would say, I don't know what the, the state regulation will be, but the federal is, is, is not, it's not legal federally. Basically, inviting the shops and giving them our land and office space is, is promoting it. And why do we need to promote something that is harmful for health and education and all this stuff? If you really care about the health of our residents and the kids and their future, this is kind of very strange to me. So I, I'm asking you to at least opt out for now until you will do more research and all the residents will be more aware of what is going on. And
Thirty seconds.
Yes, basically, this is it. I, I'm asking you to opt out now and allow some time for you because I know some of your members, when they did salary research on other issues, they changed their minds. And so I'm really asking you, whatever I Google, I immediately get a ton of information from official websites about the bad effects of marijuana on kids, brain development and cognition, learning, all that stuff. It didn't become like a good thing.
Excuse me, Tatiana, you have your time.
I'm ahead.
I, I have my point, and you have my letter.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor, we, we hit the thirty-minute mark, just so you know. And we've got about five hands up, one of which has spoken already. So, how would you like?
So let, let's, let's make sure the four people who have not spoken.
I, I will amend my statement to say seven hands. It just popped up.
Another one.
Okay, so, so let's permit the people who have not yet had a chance to speak, to speak, and then we'll see where we are time-wise afterwards.
Will do. Next, we have Shelley Sal. State your name and address.
My name is Shelley Sal. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
My name's Shelley Sal at three six six North Fourth Avenue. I have, this is kind of a side note about administrative feedback for receiving letters, receiving anything, and specifically about this ordinance and people's opposition to it or promotion of it. But isn't there a way that the administration can set it up where once a, an email is opened up, that it can actually send a receipt that it was received? I think that would be very helpful for people who do send letters and don't know if it was received or not. I'm going to the question of the cannabis ordinances. I want to, Mayor, I don't know if this is a proper correction, but you mentioned that people under twenty-one who are minors, under certain circumstances, eighteen-year-olds are considered adults. Is that true in, in New Jersey?
My, Shelley, my, what I was referring to was my understanding of the law is that this sales of cannabis are restricted to people over the age of twenty-one. Am I correct, Borough Attorney?
You're correct. Exactly the same as alcoholic beverages.
Okay, so I, I guess I would ask that you restate it as anyone under twenty-one, rather than putting in the words minors. It, it, it's a kind of moot. But just under twenty-one, anybody under twenty-one. You, you had mentioned minors, so I
Okay.
Thought that, okay. I am still a bit in, in shock that the, shock is a word because this opportunity was put in, in the, the timeframe between hearing about the opportunity and making the decision was really quite short when you have to put in a tremendous amount of work to create ordinances that really look at the details that people are concerned about. As far as the, I know that liquor also doesn't
Thirty seconds.
I know liquor also doesn't have a five-foot, sorry, five-hundred-foot restriction, but I think that there is time, and there would be time for us to examine it further, and just go ahead and opt out at this point. I, I don't think that it would hurt us to look at it more closely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley.
Next up is Zach Hale. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Zach Hale. I live at three forty-six North Fourth Avenue. Victoria mentioned earlier that there were state laws prohibiting dispensaries within five hundred feet of schools. And in response to that, Ed mentioned that a lot of synagogues action in educational capacity. Would synagogues acting in an educational capacity be like, be like schools? And would the town classify them as schools? Would the state classify them as schools? And if they're classified as schools, would the five-hundred-feet law be applicable? That's my question.
So that's a question I would throw to our attorney for guidance.
Well, the, the first thing we would have to check is to whether or not the representation that for a medical dispensary, you have to be five hundred feet away from a school. As Councilman Hale indicated, we don't believe that's the case. Although that is an older law, we are operating under the new law. So we would check that out. I would say there's probably a definition in the medical dispensary law if there is a requirement for five hundred feet about what is a school. We would educate ourselves to that. And if we had to define a synagogue which had an educational component as a school, we might be able to do that. But we're not even sure, because this is an older law, not the new law, as to whether or not there's a five-hundred-foot requirement anyway. But I assure you, we would look into that immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Attorney?
Assuming you mean me.
I mean Borough Administrator.
It looks like Ariel Del Rosario is up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, hi, this is Ariel Del Rosario. I live at two oh one South Second Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say thank you for passing this moving fast at a first read and looking forward to hopefully, fingers crossed, seeing this passed. I've heard a lot of fear mongering and rhetoric, you know, sort of reefer madness sort of things, which is disheartening because we know that marijuana has lower public health costs than alcohol, which has been obviously legal for quite some time now. Many other states have also passed and successfully implemented recreational marijuana. And to quote Dan Stern Cardinal, this guy has not fallen down. I lived in Colorado for three years. And in fact, the taxes really helped with things like education. It was great to hear Mayor Gale address the education that would be implemented to make people make informed decisions. In fact, fear mongering can help, can actually encourage people to make wrong choices because they don't know about it. Besides, Highland Park High is in our name, so, in our namesake, so why not embrace it? And I just want to say I commend the council for moving fast. You know, this is all over the news that we are one of the few boroughs or municipalities who are moving on this. So looking forward to seeing this get passed and wanna, you know, we may not all agree on everything all the time, but hopefully this will prove to our town that this will be a positive win, and change is always hard. So thank you.
Thank you, Ariel. Okay, Borough Administrator?
Yeah, next person up is Mark Lesko. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Lesko, three ten South Fourth. First off, there's no known negative effect of it, negative effects of marijuana use that I know of. And there are many positive effects, including anxiety, pain, and several other things. Secondly, people are going to use it no matter what we do. They always have. And having a more regulated way to get it, I think, would actually be better for a lot of people, rather than have to go to places like Newark or New York City or in the troublesome areas of New Brunswick. It presents less risk to our people in the town. And also would generate more economy for the town. And I'm not sure if, if it would include people from outside of town that would be able to use it as well. But people I know that are on medical have to travel very vast distances sometimes to acquire products on it. And I know several people on medical. So I, I don't see any reason not to do it, as long as it's regulated, where, again, it's not around children and there's no access for children to get it.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, next caller?
Looks like the next caller is coming up Lefty Grimes. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good evening, council. My name is, uh, Edward Lefty Grimes. I am with Satiba Cross dot org. We're a five oh one C three here in New Jersey. We advocate for disabled vets, uh, disabled cannabis patients. And, um, we support, uh, any ordinance that's gonna help uh, disabled vets and for, uh, the sick and dying people. The rhetoric I'm hearing tonight is very hurtful and very scary. Uh, we need to care for the health and welfare of the sick and the dying. In the Bible, it talks about putting the last first. And that's what we do as an organization. We help the last, help them to be first. For instance, uh, right now we're getting taxed by the state. No other medicine's being taxed, but our medical cannabis is taxed. And then there's a a two percent tax, uh, every municipality gets. And then there, uh, of course, our medicine isn't covered by insurance, so we have that. Uh, we're getting hit from all sides here. We need help. So all this rhetoric and reefer madness is very hurtful to people that are sick and dying and suffering right now. You're making people, you're you're hurting people with your rhetoric and your stigma, stigmatizing God's medicine. You don't stigmatize all the pharmaceuticals that you sell in those towns, but you stigmatize God's medicine. And they need to rethink that, maybe prey on that. Because there's something wrong when you don't want to help people that are sick and dying. We got vets with guns in their mouths, ready to blow their brains out. What are we doing for them? Have you ever spent the day in a wheelchair? If you spent the day in a wheelchair, you'd understand what it's like for these sick people that are suffering. It's not easy to go out and get your medicine, to even go out and get to do anything in life because there's no wheelchair access. And that's another thing we fight for, is is wheelchair access. So let's put the last first and, uh, thank you for your ordinance. Uh, I believe it's helpful to patients. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Okay, Borough Administrator?
Yeah, we have a one last person that hasn't spoken before and then three hands of folks who have. So I'm assuming you want me to go for the one who hasn't.
Right.
Marina, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Marina Redman. I live at three Borough Square, Parley, New Jersey. I want to tell you my journey with medical cannabis and and how much it saved my life. I suffered through PTSD between the ages of one and four and a half. I had to have a bunch of surgeries on my lower left leg to try and save it. I was in a big New York City hospital, which was really scary. Back then, your parents weren't allowed to stay over, so I had to see my mother walk away from me. And that's what they did back then, and it was scary. I had major anxiety, not knowing what was going on. I was pretty sure she was gonna show up, but she always did, not knowing what was gonna happen to me in the big scary New York City hospital. And then I had to have surgeries. I was wheeled in there away from my mother. Now these days, the parents are allowed to bring you in, sing you to sleep, make sure you're calm. No, they more or less brought me in there. I had my stuffed animal ripped away from me. And this caused me many anxiety, major anxieties with doctors and nurses and in the medical field. Then unfortunately, in two thousand seventeen, I was diagnosed with cancer. I lost fifty pounds within three weeks. None of the pharmaceutical medicines helped me. I couldn't eat, I couldn't walk. It was horrible. I just laid there vomiting, almost on and off for three weeks. And then I got my card, my medical cannabis card, which took a long time. But it saved me. It helped me out so much. It was such a game changer for me. I was able to live, I was able to walk around, I was able to joke around. I have such major anxiety sometimes with doctors. What doctor will tell you, please smoke in the parking lot before you see me? With anxiety, and yes, I have somebody driving me. When I was going through chemo, the doctor would say, go smoke out in the parking lot before you have your treatment. A doctor telling me to smoke medical cannabis in their parking lot. Um, you actually have sixty five psychiatrists in the state of New Jersey that prescribe medical cannabis. And you have ten pediatric doctors in the state of New Jersey that prescribe medical cannabis. Pediatric doctors are helping children live and go from their good to their greater good. Um, you know, Uber and Lyft cost the disabled money, the sick and dying money, which we don't have. That could cost thirty to fifty dollars one way. Our medicine is being taxed, as Mr. Lefty Grimes has already said. Um,
Thirty seconds.
Um, the, um, the dispensaries has one of the best securities ever. It it's twenty four seven, three hundred sixty five days a week, and I believe it goes to the New Jersey State Police Department. So, New Jersey State Police. So if you're worried about security, there's nothing wrong with that. A gentleman also said, um, about being five hundred feet away from schools and synagogues. Are bars and liquors, are bars and liquor stores also five hundred feet away from all these establishments? Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, Marina. Okay, Borough Administrator, it's now seven fifty five. Um, I, how many hands are still up there?
We're at four hands, uh, one of which hasn't spoken.
Okay, so let's go with the person who has not spoken. And then let's, uh, have the other three people and then let's just stop at that.
Very good.
And because we're gonna have to vote on this. Okay.
Uh, Max Brogie Sumner, you're up next.
Uh, hi, this is Max Brogie Sumner at two fifty and Amber Street. Um, I just want to say thank you, uh, Mr. Grimes. That is excellent work you're doing. And, uh, Mariana, thank you very much for sharing your story. Um, I do share a house with someone who uses medical marijuana, and I just want to say I'm hugely in favor of this ordinance. I think it'll make obtaining CBD a lot easier for them. And I would like to just urge everyone here to vote yes on this because the benefits just far away any risks that it could cause with those.
Okay, thank you, Max.
All right.
Okay.
All right, and it, so, uh, we're down to the last three who have spoken prior. Uh, first of those is, I believe, Mary Botian. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Mary Botian, seven oh nine Madison. Again, I just want to remind the council that, you know, we're hearing a lot of discussion of um, the generalities of cannabis. The issue at hand is whether or not this ordinance, which is very premature and which has lots of details missing and which neighbors and residents all over town are extremely upset about. That is the issue at hand. Uh, you've heard many, many names of people that are asking you to vote no tonight and simply to take this up at a later time. There is no requirement to put us into this now. Please, let's take our time for the folks who want to access these products. Edison will have it, New Brunswick will have it, you can have it even delivered to Highland Park. Please do not think that this will not allow folks to have access. The question is, in our extremely small town, you could, there was not even agreement on how far from a school or a park or a home. This is very premature. Uh, please understand also to anybody who's listening, contemplating coming here. This is, this is a very big area in dispute. Um, residents are very upset about this. Uh, we've been informed by the attorney that if an ordinance goes through that it makes people so unhappy, the only recourse is legal action. So we hope it wouldn't come to that. We're asking the the town to please opt out and read and look at this more carefully. Uh, but if we are imposed upon with this ordinance, we're not gonna be left with much choice, and that means we're gonna be looking at landlords, we're gonna be looking at the operators, we're gonna be looking at the delivery drivers. We're gonna have no choice but to start to focus in on the actual cannabis operators. So please be aware of that for anybody who is thinking about coming to Highland Park to do that. We hope it doesn't come to that. We're asking our town to please put the residents first, first. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. I just want to clarify, the only, um, question that we had was whether or not a synagogue is considered a school. Um, otherwise, the ordinance is following the ABC Code Title thirty three, which, um, uh, Borough, uh, Attorney is, does give us the guidelines in terms of some distances, correct? Can you unmute, unmute yourself, Ed?
Yes, we we have given you that advice and the question this evening was whether or not there's a special requirement for medical dispensaries at a certain distance. And if that's the case, we would have to be guided by that, but we'll know and we'll check that out before the ordinance is implemented.
Thank you. Okay, Borough Administrator?
Uh, yeah, we have one last hand. It looks like Gopalie Bacarelli. Or Valerie, please state your name or address for the record, please.
Hi, um, Victoria Case, again, sixteen twenty five Parker Road. Um, I just wanted to wrap up with a few quick thoughts and I wanted to thank Ed Grimes for joining us because he's a really great advocate. Um, I also, uh, did a little searching while you guys were, while everybody else was talking. There are laws in place that prevent dispensing, uh, in a school zone. It actually says, um, a thousand feet according to the New Jersey Drug Free School Zone Law. And I also looked into the medical marijuana program where I also found mention of, uh, no dispensing within five hundred feet of parks or public buildings. And I'm sure that a synagogue would be covered under one of those things, so I hope that you guys, um, look into that further and be able to clarify for the community and maybe put some people at ease. That being said, I think that there are very few, uh, places in town that we would be able to have a dispensary even. I mean, you're looking at probably the border with New Brunswick or the border with Edison because I'm pretty sure there's a lot of buildings in the middle of town that would make it impossible to have it in the middle of town. And then lastly, um, I just wanted to speak about my personal experience working in the medical marijuana, uh, industry and, uh, over the years, I've never had any issues working at a dispensary. Um, it's been a really great part of my life. I'm also a medical marijuana patient. I have had success with my own PTSD. I've had success with chronic pain. Um, I have spasms and my nerve damage and spasms in my legs, um, which immediately go away, uh, upon using medical cannabis. Uh, and I have seen incredible, incredible blessings of people being healed by cannabis, medical cannabis, um, from shrinking a tumor to overcoming the inability to speak for the first time in somebody's life since they were a five year old and being eighteen and being able to put together a full sentence because they had access to medical cannabis. Um, so things like that, I think, would go a long way. Uh, does, is Highland Park gonna vote on it? I don't know. It's up to you guys. Uh, and just thank you for having this town meeting open. I I think that, you know, with more notice, uh, and more awareness, uh, people might
More people.
Better understand.
Yeah, this is actually Gopalie now, Barbara Bacarelli, speaking from six zero three South.
Thirty seconds.
Have you spoken yet?
No. I just wanted to quickly add that I really appreciate everything that Victoria, Marina, Mark, Ariel and Lefty said. I'm definitely in favor of this ordinance. I wouldn't mind if people feel it's premature that, you know, we take a little bit more time, but I have also seen the effects of medical marijuana, in particular, with my niece, who shortly after her mother died, had to have a double mastectomy at the age of twenty eight, was nauseated, couldn't eat, and it was only medical, well, it was only marijuana, medical or or otherwise, but it was only that that helped her to get through this. Besides not, uh, besides the emotional toll of not having her mother there to hold her hand. All of us did, but I just think it's such, there's such healing properties. It it can't be disputed.
So I just want to, Borough Administrator, there there were actually two speakers on that last call. Um, do we have the name and address of the second person?
Uh, so Gopalie Bacarelli, you said your address, uh, but could you repeat it again?
Yes, six zero three South Third Avenue.
Sorry, my lights just went out there. That was, I was, because I didn't move enough, excuse me. Uh, so it wasn't due to the weather. And then, uh, Victoria, what address were you, just for the clerk's benefit?
Six
I have it.
Twenty five Parker Road.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay.
I actually had both.
Oh, sorry, Jen.
Thank all of you.
Okay, then I think Borough Administrator, that was all the hands that we had.
Correct.
In that case, um, Borough Council members, um, I have a motion from you to take up the ordinance on final reading by title. Um, may I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster.
Yeah.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Yes, and I just like to briefly say thank you to all the residents that participated for, against, you said, shared your personal experiences. Um, the gentleman Lefty Grimes, like, I I can't imagine some of the things that you're seeing with the vets. Um, I do, uh, appreciate everyone in your emails as well, yes.
Uh, so are we, uh, Borough Clerk, where, is that the end of the roll call?
That is.
Okay. All right, then, I want to thank the council members, um, for all the hard work and research they've done on all of this. Um, a big thank you also to the Borough Administrator for the work that she did on this. Um, I I think you all, um, made the right decision tonight, though it was a difficult one for, for, after hearing all of this. We did hear from, um, many people over the last few months as we discussed this. I think this will be for the benefit of Highland Park overall. And I I want to thank everyone who participated in the discussion um, tonight, whether you were for or against this. And also I, to everyone who emailed all of us over these last few months with information that we all delved into, I appreciate you all. And with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Second.
All right, our next scheduled meeting is September fourteenth. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.